Like to call the like to call the Tuesday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty one, planning board meeting. Can we roll call, please?
Claudia Volken. Here. Jim Callahan.
Here.
Bob Doherty.
Yeah.
Dave Edmonds is absent. Carolyn Turner.
Here.
Mike Fentressker is absent. And Chair Kevin Donovan.
Yeah. First up, under public hearings, with public hearing, Legacy Lane subdivision modification request to retain the roadway as a private way. To be maintained by the Private Homeowners Association rather than have the road become a public way maintained by the city after completion of construction.
Mr. Chairman, just very briefly, to kick it off, first thing I guess I would like to do is ask those that are in our audience. If you could, it's a good practice, if you wouldn't mind muting your microphone so that we don't hear any feedback that may be in your background, that's very helpful to us. So if you could do that, we very much appreciate it. This is a public hearing on a modification request on a subdivision that was approved about five years ago. It's a four lot project, and when it was approved, it was approved and intended to become public way. Intended to become a public way upon its completion. I'm, can I ask? I think it must be somebody that recently joined. Could I ask you to mute your microphones, please, if you haven't already? I'm gonna mute this last person. Okay, that's where it was coming from. All right, so this project is nearing completion. The finish coat on the roadway needs to be applied. There's a rest, a portion of Middle Street that needs to be restored in in accordance with the condition that the board imposed on approval. There was a need for a tree belt easement to be submitted that affects three of the lots in the project. And we needed to make some revisions to the HOA documents at a minimum to clarify maintenance responsibilities for the emergency access easement that exists. As we were talking to, and the developer has also at one point submitted an ASBIL plan for review, which was deemed on initial review to be acceptable. When we were talking to him about the steps needed to complete the project and close it out, he suggested that he wanted to request that the roadway remain in private ownership. That would be a change to what you had as assumptions when you approved this project. So that's why we have this hearing tonight. We did forward the request to the different departments and boards and commissions that saw this subdivision at, when it was initially proposed. And we did ask them for feedback on whether they had any issues or concerns with the notion of it remaining a private way. I think it would probably be the best thing to do now, Mr. Chairman, if you're okay with it, is to turn it over to Attorney Tarby to explain the nature of the request and some of the documentation that he has in fact prepared and submitted in the last couple of weeks. And then I can take it back when you deem it appropriate and kind of cover the comments and issues that were raised by the various city departments.
You're good. Attorney Tarby?
Yes, thank you. Since the, the last meeting, we're provided confirmatory deeds. I have those, I have all the originals in my office that have been executed, which reference the tree belt easement. So the deeds will reference the tree belt easement. We've also amended the confirmatory declaration of the Legacy Lane Homeowners Association. So that's clear, and I'm gonna read from the document, just so you understand the obligations they're taking on. So the obligations of the HOA would be to maintain, repair, replace the private roadway known as Legacy Lane, including not limited to sidewalks, curving, all utilities therein, streetlights, snow plowing, and sanding. Also provide for ongoing maintenance, repair, and funding of the stormwater management components within the subdivision in accordance with the approved plan. Provide for the maintenance and upkeep of the easement area described in the Emergency Access Agreement dated December fifth, two thousand and eighteen, and recorded at the Registry of Deeds at Book seven, four, three, eight, nine, eight, page four, one, five. Fourth, provide for the installation, maintenance, replacement, and repair of the drainage systems and emergency vehicle turnaround, as set forth in the confirmatory drainage and access easement agreement dated November twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one, recorded herewith. I'll run through that quickly in a second. And then compliance with the tree belt easement affecting watch two, three, and four, as shown on the tree belt easement plan dated December nine, two thousand and twenty, and recorded herewith. And then to install and maintain a private street sign to the existing street sign post and maintain all other required street and regulatory signs. Now, the remainder of the HOA is the usual requirements that the board requires on quarterly inspections, annual inspections on the drainage system, et cetera. So on the the confirmatory drainage and access easement that is confirmatory in nature to ratify the original drainage and access easement, which inadvertently included a typographical error in section two, where it referenced in the city. So this access easement is between the property owners and the HOA. And that grants the HOA the right to go on to the drainage easement that's on law two for maintenance, repair, and replacement purposes. Also to go on to the two thousand nine hundred and seven square foot drainage easement on law three, and then six hundred and eighty-seven square foot emergency access easement on law three. To recall, that was an easement to allow for emergency vehicles to pull in and then back out and turn around. And then we added language that would include the Legacy Lane private roadway as shown on the plan. And then add additional obligations that stay in addition for the purposes of maintaining, repairing, replacements, said quote, "Legacy Lane," unquote, including not limited to sidewalks, curving, all utilities therein, streetlights, snow plowing, and sanding. In addition, I'm speaking with the planner today. He reminded me of the requirements that an ASBIL plan must include all signage to be used on the, on the roadway, so we would need to take back that ASBIL plan that the engineer had the signage, which my client understands needs to comply with the appropriate regulatory authorities for municipal signs. So just to summarize, we revised all of the appropriate documents. Two, we need to add the signage onto the ASBIL, ASBIL plan. And the request by Mr. Mchenzie and the other property owners is to have the property, have the Legacy Lane become a private way. That would be one hundred percent maintained by them, as stated in the documents that were submitted. I think, I think that summarizes it.
I do, too.
Hey, Tina, do you want to talk before I open up to the board or?
Sure. Well, the other things that maybe just to cover before we start with the questions is some of the comments and questions we got from the departments and boards and commissions were the following. Would the HOA be responsible for the cost of operating and maintaining the streetlight? I think you heard from Attorney Tarby that language has been added. That would in fact make that clear, that it would be the HOA's responsibility. Another comment was that street signage must comply with applicable city and MUTCD. That's the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices Codes slash Requirements. That has been addressed by the language you heard Attorney Tarby cite earlier. Another issue was the continued existence of the cones and some non-conforming signage. And at one point, I think even yellow tape that characterized the beginning of the roadway and remains in existence today. We should cover that later. Another comment that was raised was who would be responsible for trash and recycling pickup? And my understanding is that on a private way, they are allowed to bring their trash to the intersection with the nearest public way, and the city or the contracted vehicles for the city will in fact pick it up. It's a matter of public health, and so it's a practice we apparently have widespread on private ways across the city. Another question, or the last one was, would the city be providing snow plowing services or with the HOA? And in fact, as you heard Attorney Tarby state, it would be the HOA's responsibility. There were at least one comment to note from another department. It's a reminder that the blending of and the fixing of the portion of Middle Street is going to have to be done very carefully to make sure that you not only don't create any puddling issues, but that you also maintain and observe the requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act and the corresponding state regulations for ADA access at the handicap ramps and the sidewalks. So it's a sort of a particular and careful construction. And so the developer's been urged by, at least I know, the DPW director to make sure that he has his engineer on site when the paving work is done, to make sure that there aren't any issues there. So those are the comments that we have from the various departments. I will say that I did a site visit yesterday, and I did provide some photographs to the planning board members. I don't know if you want me, Karen Ken, at some point, if you want her to, she can screen share those photographs with the board members in the audience, if you wish. But they will lead me eventually, I think, to a recommendation after we conduct the public hearing and answer questions. I think eventually I'm gonna recommend that we maybe, or you consider tabling discussion to the January eleventh meeting for a couple of reasons. But I can elaborate on that when the time is more appropriate. And that's what I have for now.
Any questions from the board?
Yep, through the chair. What is the status now of the cones and the non-conforming signage and yellow tape? Has that been removed or is it still there?
It was there as of yesterday afternoon around four o'clock. There is some cones that also have like connected plastic barriers to them that kind of create like a barrier effect. There is a couple of signs, at least one of which is in a grass strip. It is not compliant with MUTCD, at least in terms of colors, maybe in terms of text, and certainly in terms of the where it's placed. It's in a grass strip rather than on the back of the sidewalk where it's supposed to be by your regulations. And it's also much too close to the ground. There's a minimum clearance under the sign, and it violates that. There's a couple of signs that are temporary signs, one of which is in a grass strip on the other side. Talks about, you know, keeping slow because there are children nearby. That's in the grass strip in the right of way. I don't think it's legal there. It might be very legal on someone's lawn, but in its current location, it probably violates the regs. And you know, there is some need for some signage relative to, right now, the practice, and I believe of the owner, it appears has been to not allow any parking on the street. Some of that is certainly understandable because in the summer, we've got some pretty hot weather, and there were some construction trucks in the neighborhood doing other work. And you know, if you had those on hot pavement for good stretches of time, it could certainly have done some damage to the roadway that he's constructed so far. But I think his plan is to impose and try to prevent parking on the street by unauthorized vehicles that they don't authorize on a permanent basis. So that maybe is part of it. So there's a need for some signage, perhaps related to that. That's why it would be good to get a plan that shows where it would be located and understand the text to make sure that it will be compliant. But those are all in place today, Carolyn.
Okay, so I guess my question to Attorney Tarby is, what is the applicant's position on that issue or those issues?
They that he's gonna mark, revise the ASBIL plan with the appropriate signage. But you know, until that time, I think some of the signage will remain. I don't know, Mr. Mchenzie, you want the, you want the call here?
I don't see anyone by that name.
Okay, so I'm gonna tell you what he told me today. I haven't talked to Tom Quinn, but this is what Mr. Mchenzie told me in email today. He said the signs were put up to protect Legacy Lane because it is still a private road. And he wanted to protect it from damage. We put the signs up because several people were parking on it. Tom Quinn is aware of it, and he understands why, and knows we are dealing with planning board changing it from a public road once approved to a private road. The agreement with Tom is that once signed off by the city making it a private road, that all signage will be provided to compliance. That's, that's all I can tell you on that. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the board? See, none. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in public would like to speak?
Now, just to interject, if you do, members of the audience, we'd ask you to let us know that by taking a cursor and hovering it over the bottom of your screen. You'll see a reactions button, and if you click on that, there's a feature that says raise hand. And if you could click on that, I'll be able to see it, and we will call on you as we see you. I do, Mr. Chairman, I do see someone in the audience. And with your permission, I can recognize her.
Sure.
She's, her microphone is unmuted. If you would please give your name and address for the record, Ms. Brosnan.
Sure, it's Nancy Brosnan. We live at seventy-three Middle Street, so we're just two houses down. First of all, I just wanted just, what, I've heard traffic light a few times. I, can you just explain that a little bit?
Traffic light? Did you say traffic light?
I heard traffic light that, I mean, I don't know if that was your verbiage, but the traffic light, there's no traffic planned, is there?
No, no traffic light in the plan. It was referenced to a streetlight. There's a, there's a street light that is gonna be, and I believe it's in place at the end of the cul-de-sac. It already is there. And the question-
I think is, is great, but the question that the big, we're not as concerned with the signage as we are with the appearance of that roadway. It has brought our property values down, not to mention that people, like, they haven't even said to us, like, what is wrong with that street? Like, you can't go down there at all? I mean, it just, it's so uninviting, and it brings down the whole. We have a community here, and it just brings it all down. And there's, I mean, you talk about the change, and Mr. Tarby has talked about the change in the signage, but that's not our issue. The issue is, it's a eyesore to look at, and it's been like that for two and a half years.
Ms. Brosnan, can I just ask a question of clarification? When you say that, are you saying that because of the presence of those traffic cone type things? Or are you talking about the fact that the roadway is not yet finished?
Oh, no, I think the roadway looks fine. It looks finished to me. It's the traffic cones and that tape. It just looks like a construction zone. It looks so ridiculous. And it's not something that is not blatant to everybody who's walking by or driving by. It just looks like a full construction zone. And I just think that as neighbors, we put up this construction for two and a half years of banging all day long, which is fine. They were building something. But now that it's over, we're still dealing with it. And I don't think it's really fair because it doesn't need to be there. Nobody wants to go down there. They want to chase little, if they want to chase kids going on their bikes, do like I do. You know, it's just not fair to the rest of us to have to see that for two and a half years. And it keeps getting continued and continued, and then the talk is, you know, but once it gets to be a private way, we'll change the signs, but that has nothing to do with because they move it out of the way when, you know, the trash pickup comes. But then as soon as the pickup comes, they move it right back. It's just, it's not, it's just not fair for all of us to have to look at. First of all, decorating our houses, I paid a lot of money for my house, and I have to look at that. And I just, there seems to be no answer for that. And it's not just me. I've got a lot of neighbors that feel the exact same way. Some don't want to speak up, but as Karen knows, I have no problem speaking up because it's an everyday occurrence.
Thank you for your remarks.
I want to see what is going to be done about that. I really don't care whether the signs are the wrong color. I don't care whether it's a private way. What I care about is the fact that how can somebody get away with letting it look like a construction zone? That's what it looks like.
Thank you.
Good, Nancy.
Mr. Chairman, I'm looking through the audience. Again, if you would.
Audience would like to speak on this matter?
I see no one else, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. See, and then we go back to the planning director for a recommendation unless the board has any more questions. Carol, Claudia?
So what I'm getting here is a developer who originally came to us with a subdivision that asked for a public way. And we approved it as a public way. And we assumed that the way would look like any other public way in the city of Auburn. And then the developer is now before us, I believe, on a modification. Is that right, Tina?
Yes, yes.
And is asking for us to modify an approved plan that has a public way and to change, change that into a private. And I, I have a sense, and perhaps I'll direct this question to Attorney Tarby, who may or may not be able to answer it. But I have a sense that the petitioner wants to modify the plan in order to have this road look a certain way or to have an ability to sort of exert sort of more control over things like traffic cones and tape and who gets to park there than a public way would allow. And so I'm not suggesting that that is in any way, you know, some sort of ulterior motive. But what I'm getting so far is that as, as a city, right? What is in it for us? What is the interest of the public in modifying this plan to make it a private way instead of a public way? And then once I kind of get a sense of what's sort of, you know, the public interest in us doing this, then I want to contrast that with, well, what is the detriment to the public interest? So, you know, I'm, I'm now trying to figure out here what the cost and the benefit is of, of, of letting the developer change what his original plan was. So if either Attorney Tarby or Tina would like to help me with those questions, that's what I'm sort of struggling with.
Well, the benefits of the city is it's one less roadway to maintain, to plow, perform whatever repairs are necessary. We stated that the ASBIL plan would have to have the signage on there that complies with the appropriate regulatory authority that controls signs. I think Tina mentioned the, you know, regulations that, that do that. So we're taking a step forward to resolve the sign, sign problem by that. And you know, the board may want to consider a condition, proposed condition that I have written out that states the condition of approval shall be that the applicant shall revise the ASBIL plan to include all signage, which signage shall be in compliance with all appropriate municipal regulations for private street signage. That's just a, that's just a suggestion. But, you know, what's supposed to happen here is the ASBIL plan gets updated with the signage. And that's the signage that would be on Legacy Lane. Know what happens after that? I don't think anyone has a control, you know, like, you drive all over the city, and you see people with those, you know, slow signs with green, you know, little guy holding a sign. I've gone through streets with those, you know, in one of the lanes. It, it happens all, all over the city. But what we're saying here is that there'd be a requirement that all, all the signage, you know, being those signs that were in the photos taken, you know, yesterday. You know, there's one sign that's in the planting strip along the curb that has, that would have to be moved to the, the back of the sidewalk and at the appropriate height. There's you know, other signs on the, on the poles that I'm sure would have to be revised. You know, when I, I can't read with the sign on the fences or what, or what that says. But you know, all the signs would have to be, be in compliance.
And Joe, I'm looking at the picture that the speaker referenced, which is a bunch of, I'm not sure they're traffic cones. They look somewhat permanent, stuck in the ground. I can't tell from the picture exactly what the mechanism is of how they're stuck in there with, with tape on it. And I'm getting the sense that this is a mechanism by which this private way would be having some sort of controlled access or something. So I'm getting the sense that there might be some issue with the continued existence of big orange cones and tape in perpetuity. Could, could someone help me with that? Joe, do you have any thoughts on, oh, Tina, thank you. I appreciate that.
I was using, I was using the raised hand feature here. Yes, so I thought about this because it is very striking when you go down the street, even though I've seen photographs of it that have been sent to the office, you really do notice it is an unsightly condition. And when you think about it, I think it is to try to restrict and reinforce the notion of, don't come in here. But I think that the planning board should consider, and I think it has the authority, to consider requiring that they be removed. What they in essence do is narrow down and neck down the width of the pavement of that roadway. And you did approve a certain design with a certain pavement width that was going to be needed. And so while for some period of time, I do think it was, you know, perhaps not neighborly, but certainly appropriate or okay for him to have them in there when things were under construction. It's now been a very long time, and may in fact, unless conditioned against it, might become a permanent feature. So my thought would be to address it outright, perhaps in two ways. In the longer term, if you were to approve a change and allow it to remain a private way, maybe you would do it conditioned upon some condition that precluded him ever installing or erecting barriers, and we'll find the right language and just say that you, you can't do that on, on, on this private roadway to prevent that practice in the future. And then another thing to consider would be whether or not to require the developer, if you, if you agree with the notion that the approved subdivision plan and therefore the roadway needs to be at least a minimum width, and that's not available when those barriers are in that placement, then perhaps we can immediately require their removal because the roadway is not operating as it was intended, designed, and constructed when they have them in the road. That's how I might think about it.
Okay, so I have a follow-up question through the chair. So-
if this remains a public way, clearly there is not going to be any private person, former developer, resident, whoever, that has sort of the ability to erect anything in a public street, like forever, right? Am I correct on that? That I can't go out to the public street in front of my house and put anything in the street that I have any expectation will remain for any period of time, DPW or whoever is going to come and get that away? Am I right on both of them?
I believe, I believe you are.
Okay. So, so my question is, seeing that I'm getting the sense that there is someone, perhaps the developer, perhaps someone else in this area who is interested in restricting this particular street for whatever reason, and has gone, has sort of originally proposed this as a public way and for whatever reason has now asked us to change. I'll be upfront. My concern is enforcement. So if we go ahead and say, okay, we'll modify our approved plan that allows for a public street only, and then we'll allow a modification to a private road. I'm getting the sense that enforcement of barriers may be an issue in the future. So Tina, can you address, or Joe? I'm easy. I have a concern that in a private way situation, we can condition our approval of this private way however we want to. But my question is, next year or the year after, if all of a sudden there are barriers in the road, what's the enforcement mechanism of such a condition?
Good question. Let me just back up for one second. So first of all, those cones that you see in the street and I, you know, connect it into the street. I see them on construction sites all the time and it's a tape. You know, you can pull it five feet apart, you can pull it 10 feet apart. Number one. Number two, when I talked to Mr. Maccenzi about it, he said there's no issue with FedEx, UPS, Amazon trucks for making the turn. I know, I'm just stating, you know, what's happening out there. And then, you know, number three, you know, as I said a few minutes ago, I see these things all over the city where people put things out in the street to put people to slow down. And they're into the right of way. And I guess, you know, what is the enforcement? I think the enforcement is DPW. You know, would probably have the right to, you know, remove it, even if it's a private way. There are plenty of private ways around the city that DPW goes in and plows, DPW will sand at times and you know, I would suggest that probably DPW would have the authority to do that, or would the board have the right to rescind their approval? I don't know. I haven't looked at it.
Well, you know, in the interest of just being upfront, I myself would not vote in favor of this proposal without an airtight answer on the issue of enforceability. And I don't know if this is something that perhaps the city solicitor could opine on as to whether if we were to modify this street or any other street in the city of Woburn to be a private way, if there was some obstruction that was erected in the street or some something that happened a year or two years or whatever, what is the enforcement of either a condition of approval or simply you can't have stuff in either a public way or a private way? So, so without clarity on enforcement, knowing that this has been an issue in the past and I have, you know, I have no idea whether it's going to be an issue in the future. Again, I'm not saying I know why the developer has wanted to change a public way to a private way, no idea. But I'm concerned enough about the situation to ask the question of enforcement of any condition that the planning board could place on approving this. I'm not wild about sort of a rescinding option, knowing just as a practical matter, how difficult that would be. You know, that wouldn't assuage my concern. So that's where I am on it.
Yeah, so if I could just go to the reason why the request is being made, so the three new houses are all owned and occupied by Mr. Maccenzi's three children and their family. So that's the reason he's made the request for a private way so that his family, people aren't pulling in there and pulling out landscaping trucks and packing there to service other houses in the neighborhood. And other people aren't packing in there, you know, during the night or during the day, so.
Okay, well, I appreciate, I appreciate knowing the reason. I guess the unfortunate part about this is, you know, there are other neighbors near that are not family members that apparently are aggrieved, aggrieved is the word I meant, with the way that the road has been, you know, presented to them up until now. And so therefore I'm concerned about the wider public. Of course, I'm concerned about Mr. Maccenzi and his family too, but I'm also concerned about sort of the neighborhood, the wider public, and not having this become a bone of contention in the future. So that is still a concern.
Yep. Well, to that point, the concern is legitimate. I'm not saying it's not legitimate, but all abudders within 300 feet of this property were notified at this hearing. I don't have the copy of the abudders list here. I would imagine there had to be at least 30, you know, properties from this property. And it appears that we have, you know, one abuddar that's appeared to express their concern. And I'm not downplaying that concern. I'm just stating a fact.
Right. And the abuddar that spoke was very clear that she didn't think that she was the only one. But regardless, the policy that I'm being asked to sort of move on is, can a family, can a set of people have a street in the city of Woburn that they all live on and attempt to restrict access to that street in a way that maybe is not conducive to the rest of the neighborhood? Like I get that, you know, in a small street with all family members, there may not be an appetite to have, you know, lots of activity from people that don't live there. You know, obviously anybody in the city of Woburn is not thrilled when you know, other people come in and park on their street or, you know, use their street that don't live there, you know. So that's kind of universal. But the amount of signage here, the amount of sort of, you know, cones and obstructions, I mean, I get that this is a big issue. All right. You know, the amount of signs and, you know, I understand, I think, what's going on here. And my concern is that by weighing the pros and cons to the public's interest of moving this from a public way to a private way, you know, I'm concerned. So I remain concerned.
Maybe the answer is what you posed the question a few minutes ago, maybe city solicitor should opine on the enforcement issue.
Maybe so.
Help you make that decision.
Maybe so. So, you know, that, I mean, I certainly welcome any other board input, but, you know, I think that is where I'm coming out that, you know, technically with, you know, the technical aspects of the signs and the technical aspects of the ASBIL plan, you know, all right, I get that. But, you know, I'm struggling with what I see as sort of a fundamental conflict here between, you know, a private way and how the administration of that in the future will affect the wider neighborhood versus, you know, the fact that it is now approved as a public way, which would essentially prohibit anyone from doing anything like that off the bat.
Thank you. Any other input from the board? See you none.
Chair. Is that this matter needs a little bit more attention that Claudia spoke about. But I think in the interim, I think a letter should be sent from the planning board to the developer to have all signage in roadway arcades or other means removed immediately within 24 hours until this is resolved, because it was granted as a public way. And if they win their petitions for private roadway, then so be it. The signage will all be addressed at that point, but in the interim, I think it's in the best of the entire neighborhood to try and mitigate the situation.
Any other input from the board? See you none. Claudia, I mean, I'm sorry, Tina, do you have any?
Sure. Well, I would like to form a recommendation for your consideration. And that would be to continue this public hearing to the next meeting of the planning board, which is scheduled for January 11th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Right now, that meeting is scheduled to be a in-person meeting at Woburn City Hall. But given COVID, it would be just for the benefit of those in the audience, subject potentially to change to in-person, should conditions warrant. Doing the continuance would allow a couple of things to get that airtight answer regarding enforceability of a condition regarding the signage or the barriers. It would also allow us to share with you a third document that was talked about and discussed this evening, but the board members have not yet seen it in its revised form, and we could do that in the interim. Also allow us, obviously, to receive that ASBIL and the text of the signage so that maybe we could see the location. Not only the location, but also confirm compliance with applicable regulations as well. As for the barriers in the signage and Jim's comment, I am in favor of the idea of recommending to you that the barriers be removed immediately. I am a little sensitive to the fact that this roadway is designed to be a public way, but we haven't yet accepted it or recommended it be accepted by the city. And it is still technically under construction. The final code isn't down. So I'm a little more hesitant about lifting or requiring the lifting of the parking requirements immediately, because if there were to become any damage as a result of that, you know, it might make the situation a little bit messy. So I guess my recommendation in the end would be perhaps to consider requiring the barriers be removed immediately as obstructions, in addition to the continuance.
I'd make a motion to accept the planning director's recommendation, which I understand to send a communication to the city solicitor asking for her opinion as to enforceability of any conditions on a public way. Sending a letter to the developer stating that the barriers that obstruct the street need to be removed within 24 hours of his receipt of the communication. And then with respect to continuing the matter to our next hearing date on the 11th at 7 o'clock, with respect to getting the documentation prepared, that is certainly would be part of the motion as well. Tina, did I miss anything in my restatement?
No, you did not. All right, that would be my motion.
I will second that.
Okay, motion made by Claudia, second by Bob. To continue the hearing till January 11th.
At 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM. Good roll call, please.
Claudia Bogan.
Aye.
Jim Callahan.
Aye.
Bob Darty.
Aye.
Carolyn Turner.
Aye.
Chair Kevin Donovan.
Aye. Five in favor, none opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Tarby.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, under public hearings, proposed zoning text amendment to further amend the 1985 City of Woburn zoning ordinance by A, deleting its entirely section 11.6.12, rooftop dining in the BD district, and insert a new section 11.6.12 in its place, and B, deleting note 27 from notes to 5.1 table of use of regulations in inserting it in its place, the following. 27 rooftop dining may be authorized by special permit from the city council if the conditions outlined in section 11.6.12 on that.
So, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I can promise you this will be the last time this year you see a rooftop dining amendment. And for those in the audience, I can promise that because it is our last meeting of the entire year. These amendments that are before the board this evening were actually drafted by the city solicitor. She came up with them a number of months ago and had shared them with the council at that time. But then we determined that the nature of her amendments were outside the so-called four corners of the legal ads that had been placed for the earlier zoning amendments. So it was advertised separately. The hearings are being held now between, obviously, the board here and the city council, which is hopeful that you will recommend this evening that will allow them to take a final vote of adoption at their meeting next week. The amendments, as I said, were mentioned and suggested by the city solicitor. She also did share that with the building inspector and myself, gave us an opportunity to offer our amendments, which she largely or wholly incorporated. And so it is a public hearing and I'm available to answer any questions. But upon completion of the hearing, I'm going to recommend that the planning board in turn recommend to the council that the amendments be adopted as drafted.
Any questions from the board? See, and this is a public hearing. Is there anyone else probably would like to have some input or questions?
If there are, I'll just say quickly, hover your cursor over the bottom of your screen, touch the reactions button, and you'll see the raised hand feature. Mr. Chairman, I'm looking through the audience now, and I don't see anybody with their hand raised.
I see none. The planning director said.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'm sorry.
Second that.
Motion made by Claudia for the public hearing, second by Bob. Roll call, please.
Claudia Bogan.
Aye.
Jim Callahan.
Aye.
Bob Darty.
Aye.
Carolyn Turner.
Aye.
Chair Kevin Donovan.
Aye. Five in favor, none opposed. The planning director's recommendation was to recommend the planning board issue a favorable report of the proposed zoning text amendments.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Bob, second by Claudia. Roll call, please.
Claudia Bogan.
Aye.
Jim Callahan.
Aye.
Bob Darty.
Aye.
Carolyn Turner.
Aye.
Chair Kevin Donovan.
Aye. Five in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Next up, under subdivisions, Allen Garish Drive, 89-92 Pearl Street, discussion decision on need or not for streetlights at the end of cul-de-sac, cattle crossing LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I put this on the agenda to see if we, as a collective body, particularly the planning board, could come to a conclusion on whether or not to require the installation of a streetlight in this subdivision. One was in fact included on the original approved plan, and I believe the location was at the very end of the new cul-de-sac. As it turned out, the engineering department discovered that that light was not put in. But he noted, the reviewer noted, that the existing, or what had been the existing streetlight on Pearl Street had been relocated as part of the construction process. And it was relocated in such a location that And it was um relocated in such a location that it technically fell within 300 feet of the end of the cul-de-sac. That's important because that happens to be your requirement is one street light for every 300 feet. So we discussed at an earlier meeting the fact that the light was missing. And there was the discussion about the possibility that the existing street light on Pearl Street might provide enough light. Uh, such that a new additional street light at the end of the cul-de-sac might not be needed. I don't know if any members had an opportunity to drive by the property. And if so, whether they have an opinion as to whether a street light should be required.
Uh, Tina, if I may, uh, through the chair, Kevin, I actually had the opportunity to go by there this evening. Um, and I think that it was uh pretty dark. Um, and if I had to make a decision today, I would recommend that it would be required in the cul-de-sac. Thank you.
Other input from the board? Thank you, Carolyn.
There is a chair.
Jim.
Yeah, the same opinion as Carolyn. Um, see, it may be an alternative when I looked at it. Um, there's a utility pole opposite the cul-de-sac. That may achieve the same goal uh to eliminate the intersection. But uh without it's fairly dark and there's a. Dangerous intersection just uh south of that that was a concern when we voted on this development. Um, Pearl want to, I think it's rare Pearl also, but. I I think uh. People should probably put a set of eyes on it for their own opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any other input from the board? See you, Nun.
Um, I'm wondering, Mr. Chairman, if it might make sense. Well, it sounds like from what we've heard to date. Excuse me, a couple of members are concerned that the existing amount of light is not sufficient. I'm intrigued by Jim's suggestion that there might be short of requiring a new. Uh, light pole and light at the very end of the cul-de-sac, there might be an existing pole. That could service with just a new light head on it, might provide sufficient light. I wonder if maybe the best course of action at this point would be for me to relay that. Uh, those things up to the developer and ask him if perhaps there's a way for him to put. I don't know, maybe there's a way to put a light on that temporarily to give us a better sense of if that pole that Jim mentioned was used, would that be sufficient? And maybe he can do something to give us an idea about that on a, you know. Non-permanent basis until you can make a call. That makes sense? That's what I'll do.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, uh, approval minutes, November ninth, twenty twenty-one. And November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Uh, just to note on the November ninth meeting, Mr. Donovan, you uh. Were not in attendance at either meeting, so I think you would be, uh, other than that, everybody else here is eligible to vote.
Make a motion to accept the draft minutes of the November ninth, twenty twenty-one meeting as submitted.
Back in.
Motion made by Karen, except the November ninth, twenty twenty-one meeting, second by Bob. Roll call, please.
Claudia Bogan.
Hi.
Jim Callahan.
Hi.
Bob Darty.
Hi.
Carolyn Turner.
Hi.
Chair Kevin Donovan, miss accent cracked.
Four in favor, one standing.
I'd like to make a motion, accept the November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one minutes.
Second.
Motion made by Bob to accept the November sixteen, twenty twenty-one minutes, accepted by Claudia. Roll call, please.
Claudia Bogan.
I.
Jim Callahan.
Hi.
Bob Darty.
Hi.
Carolyn Turner.
Hi.
Chair Kevin Donovan.
Stand uh for a favor, one of stand. Thank you. Next up, we have point and board director update.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, just briefly, I'll recap our next meeting, as we've said, is January eleventh. Right now, it's scheduled to be an in-person meeting to be held in the city council chambers at starting at seven. Right now, the agenda will include the following, the continued public hearing on Legacy Lane modification request. Uh, the election of new board officers for calendar year twenty twenty-two. And we'll also have a discussion, I'm planning on potential revisions to filing fees. Um, we are asked to look at them annually. We have not updated them in a number of years. But I will be recommending at least some changes, at least in part to to reflect. Uh, increased costs of advertising, which we've experienced over the last year. They've gone up now. I'm going to say Karen would have a better sense, but it's twenty-five to thirty-three percent increase maybe in the cost of our legal notices. So. We will, my hope is to come to you in January with some proposed uh changes and explanations. Uh, changing your regulations would in fact require a public hearing. So once we get consensus on uh what we want the fees to be or how we want them to change. We could consider then scheduling a public hearing for one of your February meetings. And right now, that's what we have scheduled for January, and that's my report.
Thank you.
I see no other business on the agenda. So absent anything coming to light, I would make a motion to adjourn the planning board meeting at seven fifty-seven P M.
Second.
Motion made by Claudia to adjourn the planning board meeting, second by Bob. Roll call, please.
Claudia Bogan.
I.
Jim Callahan.
Hi.
Bob Darty.
Hi.
Carolyn Turner.
Hi.
Chair Kevin Donovan.
Hi, five in favor, none opposed. Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good holiday.
Happy holidays.
Thank you. Happy holidays.